Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will open this meeting to the Syracuse Planning Commission and momentarily we will start our public hearings for this evening. Before we do so, however, we'll take care of one item of housekeeping business first, namely the approval of the minutes of our last meeting held in November. Is there a motion for action on those minutes?
No, to approve the minutes of the November 18th, 2019 meeting.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions?
Abstention.
Two abstentions noted. And that allows us now to move into our agenda of public hearings for this evening. Just by way of background for those who are unfamiliar with our process, as each application is announced from the podium, we ask that the applicant or their representative come forward to the podium, provide their name and address for the record, and then a brief summary of the application. Following questions from the commission members, we will invite members of the public who wish to speak in favor of the application to come forward to do so, and then we will offer similar opportunity to those who wish to speak in opposition to the application to come forward and do so. And where comments are offered in opposition to the application, we will encourage the applicant to return to address those comments made in opposition. So with that, by way of background, we can begin with our first hearings this evening.
Good evening, commission members. Mr. Koolit, the first two public hearings are companion pieces and also continuations from the November 18th, 2019 meeting. The first one is a re-subdivision. This is R 1975 to combine two properties into one new lot at 300 and 324 Spencer Street. 300 Spencer Street LLC is the owner and applicant, and these properties lie within a lakefront T5 zoning district. The second public hearing, the companion piece, is SR 1908. This is a site plan review for demolition and new construction, also a continuation from November 18th, 2019. This is to construct a 106 square foot office building and parking, covered parking structure, and an additional Phase II building at 300 and 324 Spencer Street. 300 Spencer Street LLC is the owner and applicant, and again, both of these are in the lakefront T5 zoning district.
Okay, thank you very much. If the applicant is here, please come forward.
Good evening, commission. My name is Jeremy Cali, C-A-L-I. I'm attorney for Bankers Healthcare Group, which owns 300 Spencer Street LLC, and we're glad to be here. I have our architects, King &amp; King, Chad Rogers, and Matt Finn here, as well as Scott Freeman from Kepler Freeman, our site guys, and they'll be helpful to answer any questions potentially that the commission or anyone else has. Good to be back. We just want to walk through what we're asking and address what's left of some of the deviations that we spoke about last time we were here that we are requesting. I think you'll notice that we've been hard at work to drop from 14 to seven deviations. Now, I believe, six, and we'll address that this evening and walk through that with you. And our hope this morning is for approval on these. I know, potentially conditioned on SIDA being the lead agency on the seeker, their meeting 17th, to hopefully vote for the negative declaration. So they have everything that they need, and we'd like to walk through these with you. As to the first deviation, the proposal that we're asking for is really the rear door loading docks and service entries being prohibited along the frontages. I think if you see in our property, we're uniquely situated in that we have three main streets, or I guess would be considered three A streets: Solar Street, Kilpatrick Street, and Spencer Street. That makes up our six-acre piece of property where we're proposing this building. Just to let you know a little bit about the building and why we're doing it, Bankers Healthcare Group currently has over 260 employees in Syracuse. We have about 250 in Davies, Florida, and about 40 in New York City. We're growing rapidly in Syracuse and want to continue to grow in Syracuse. Right now, we have a building that we built on 201 Solar Street, which is directly next door to this property, which is the property where the first student bus garage used to be. We have most of our employees in there, but we have grown out of it very rapidly. We are now occupying 201 Solar Street. We're occupying the JGB firehouse across the street. We're occupying most of 115 Solar Street down behind the Freedom of Espresso there in Franklin Square. We have two floors above Suds Factory, the fourth and the fifth floor that we have filled, and now we're about to move into a 9,000 square foot place in the atrium, right by the ice skating rink there for our sales force. As you can imagine, we can't build this building fast enough to get everybody together under one roof and to be able to continue to grow in Syracuse. So if you look at the property, you'll see these three major streets. One of the, I think what was considered technically a proposed deviation was that there is a rear door that is an exit for a stairwell on Solar Street. In the building of this building, it's really designed to face the Inner Harbor and not the, so that would be across Kilpatrick Street by the Aloft Hotel, looking at the Inner Harbor. To the right of that, where you see Solar Street, that frontage area, across the street from that is the abandoned crib factory. There is a door there that needs to be proposed because the, it's required to conform the New York State Building Code, because there is a stairwell that needs to be there and an exit for it under the New York State Building Code. So we're really dealing with two opposing regulations in this regard. But I don't believe, at this point, I think we've, I hope in your minds, addressed this issue. The door in question is a means of egress. It's required to conform to the New York State Building Code. But we propose to change the door to an aluminum frame with aluminum storefront entry door, full glazing light, as shown on the revised elevations that I think, that I think you have been provided. So it's going to look very nice. You won't notice that it's, that it's a door, but it's required under the New York State Building Code to have an exit to that fire staircase. Number two, there is a deviation that we're proposing, but again, I think if you take a look at this, this is one of those deviations that is required because we're dealing with competing regulations. We have a unique piece of property here where we are on three A streets. So we propose the building to be on the corner of Solar Street and Kilpatrick Street facing the Inner Harbor. But as a part of our property on the other side, we do have Spencer Street, which is an A street. In meeting with the zoning department and getting their advice and walking through what we need to do with them, there is a T5 regulation that requires there to not be first-tier parking on any A street. Our problem is we have three A streets. So we have solved that problem where we're putting our building in relationship to Solar and in relationship to Kilpatrick, but we can't solve that problem on Spencer without proposing a future building there. So to fulfill the regulation under the T5 zoning rules, we have to propose a building there. We're certainly willing to do that in Phase II. That would potentially be our gym. We do have a gym that we provide for all of our employees with personal trainers. Right now, that gym is at 201 Solar. Potentially the gym or potentially more office space. But we certainly hadn't intended to do that initially. That proposal is really in conformity with meeting with the zoning department and recognizing that we can't have first-tier parking on Spencer Street. And not only, just not having parking there does not fulfill that T5 regulation. There needs to be a building on Spencer Street proposed. So we have done that. In doing that, we've now come into non-compliance with the other regulation that says you can only have one primary building on a lot. And so we're certainly willing to do whatever this board recommends, whether we propose the building to fulfill one regulation or don't have the building fulfill the other. We will comply with whatever your, whatever your recommendation is there. So we have conflicting regulations in that regard. If you look to number three, we have been meeting with the city arborist, and in conjunction with him and working through what's required in that regard, the city arborist had kind of indicated to us that some of the regulations are a little out of date and proposed five other species of plants, trees, that we are in agreement with. And so we're really just following his recommendations, the city arborist, and are going to comply with what he's, what he's requested of us, and you can see those there. So our response related to that deviation is we just agree with the city arborist, and we'd like to do what he's, what he's recommended in regards to those five species. Number four, there is a regulation here, Article 4, Paragraph 5A1 of the City Zoning Rules and Regulations, that facades shall be built parallel to the principal frontage line with a minimum of 70% of its length. Two things in regards to that. Kilpatrick Street, if you notice, used to be straight along that, along that route heading into Solar, and it was curved and changed to meet up with the other street across from Solar. So we have strategically, well, attempted to comply with that in having the building face along the street where the curvature is, looking into the Inner Harbor. In terms of the 70% of frontage on a six-acre lot, that's impossible. We'd have to build an Amazon-style warehouse, I think, one story, and then we wouldn't be able to comply with the parking regulations. So we have put the building in the, in the most strategic spot that I think is most beneficial for the city and for BHG, because really, for us, we're really looking to be a gateway to the Inner Harbor there, and for our employees to be able to have that view past the Aloft Hotel and take a look at the Inner Harbor, we think would be ideal for both the city and for us. So we are asking for a deviation there. We would not be able to take up 70% of the frontage in that regard. If you take a look at number five, this is one that we talked about in November, the exterior materials. The regulation is that those materials have to be brick, stone, wood, or the clapboard siding. What we found in just talking with our general contractor, with our architects, and with others, on a building that's four to five stories, and I think it would be difficult, I don't want to challenge anyone, to find a building four or five stories or higher that utilizes that particular kind of clapboard siding, as it's very small. It is five-to-seven inch pieces that require painting probably every six to 10 years. So it would just be financially prohibitive, cost prohibitive, to build a five-story building with that type of clapboard siding. So we are proposing the wood, the stone, and we are proposing a, give me one moment so I can read it. I want to make sure I say it right. An insulated metal panel system that I would submit is a higher quality and more aesthetically pleasing product. It's an insulated, very nice-looking, larger product that you put on buildings of that size that you don't have to repaint every six to 10 years. If you notice, right across the street from us, in the Aloft Hotel, they actually use a similar product. And so this would be a self-insulated, those run about 30 to 42-inch pieces instead of five-to-seven inch pieces, and it's more practical for a, for a building of our size. So we are asking for a deviation in relationship to that. Most of the buildings, as you can see, I think you see the wood, you see the stone, and then those, those particular pieces of material. Number six, there was some discussion about a deviation in relationship to windows being equal, with their height equal or greater than their width. And so we went back to the drawing board after our November meeting and have made some adjusted, adjustments to that. I think what we're attempting to do, and if you take a look at the picture of the building, and I think at this time I'll have Chad, if he's here, oh, Chad, come up and talk a little bit about the changes we made and what we're proposing to do. But if you look at the building, what we're trying to do is have it look the best it can from the Kilpatrick Street side and give people the best view that they can have, as opposed to the abandoned crib factory or the construction storage areas. We want to take a look at the Inner Harbor. And so we're trying to maximize the window space from people's offices and from our atrium. We have a two-story atrium where our whole company can meet for events or award ceremonies in the building, where they'd be able to view the Inner Harbor from that area. But I'll have Chad talk about the windows and what changes we have made.
Chad Rogers, King &amp; King Architects, 358 West Jefferson Street. You can see on the rendering in front here, the changes all come at the point.
Yeah, take that microphone off.
All the changes that were made are on the north facades, so facing the Inner Harbor. Windows in, on the second floor in this area, windows on the first floor in this area, and then at each, at the corners. And if you remember the old one, we had the two, the two first and second floor strip windows, and we had more horizontally oriented corner windows, so those have been addressed. They're easier to see in the 2D elevation, but it's those one, two, three, four locations. We've, we've requested to still stick with the horizontal orientation for the masonry opening on the second floor here. We've oriented the mullions vertically, obviously, but this is a key second-floor common atrium, bottom-of-atrium area that we, presents a great view to the harbor, and we'd like to propose maintaining that. And then I think, I think the large window up here is slightly more wider than it is tall. Again, key views to the harbor.
Can you point out, is the second page the previous design?
Yeah, this was, this was last month's submission.
Can you just then point out where you made the changes?
Sure. Can you hold that? So these windows here on the second floor became, just punched open.
Okay.
This strip down here on the first floor.
Okay.
On the end here, we've made it, changed the proportions, so it's more vertical than horizontal. And I believe on this, on the corner down here as well, a slight change to do the same.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think, again, just to point out, you'll notice in the Aloft that across from us, they have very similar window styles as well, I think probably for the same purposes. So I think that the design looks appealing and certainly serves our purpose in terms of having a good view. In terms of number seven, the City of Syracuse zoning rules and regulations deal with signage, Article 4, 5D. And the external sign ban may be applied to the facade of each building, providing it does not exceed three feet in height. And again, I just would, would submit to the, to the commission that a three-foot sign on a five-story building wouldn't serve a ton of purpose. Given the size of the building, I think you see our proposed signage, we'd be asking for a deviation in relationship to that. So I think it says one facade no greater than three feet tall, and we would be asking for a deviation in the areas where you see our proposed signage on the, on the plans that you've given. At the end of this, I think, I think given the, the types of deviations we're asking, I would submit that some of them are necessary. I think all of them are prudent and make sense and would serve the city and BHG really well. We're excited to get this building up and get a bunch of employees down there in the Inner Harbor. If you guys have any questions, we're ready.
Thank you for the updated presentation, especially for attention to the waivers that be required in this second iteration of the project. And let's see if there are additional questions from the commission then. Questions?
I think it's this one. Fix it.
So you just explained that a lot of what you offered, a lot of what you expressed, helps you guys, that's helping the city. I think the ways that it helps the city is it's a really good-looking building. And, and in terms of the deviations, I think some of the, some of the regulations, listen, it's impossible to really think through every possible scenario when you're coming up with regulations that could happen. And I don't know that, you know, a five-story building on the corner of Kilpatrick and Solar with the three A streets and a six-acre lot certainly didn't fit into perfectly all the T5 regulations that were down there. We want to comply with all of them as much as we possibly can. In the areas where we're deviating, it makes the building more functional, look better, and be a place that really fulfills the plan that I think the city has had for the Inner Harbor, that people would live down there, work down there, shop down there. We're going to have, in the next five years, 500 young employees in that building, working, living, eating, and shopping. That's about as good for the city as it gets.
Is there a similar before and after with regard to the door on the south elevation? I'm sorry, an east elevation that is identified as a quote "rear" door?
So he submitted to the elevation, just make sure I have the right sheet, Sheet 8302, dated December 9th. Okay, so we show the door with the glass panel in it on that. It's the eastern facade.
Okay.
And our previous, previously, it was just a side door, so.
So there are two doors. There's one about not quite midline, and there was one at the corner that's midline. Looks like it may have glass, and the one on the corner looks solid. Were they both of concern, or was it just the one that was at the middle of the building?
It's just the middle of the building, as far as I know. Stair door.
So we're not concerned about the door at the corner?
Is this the one you're referring to right here?
Yep.
It's just a glass window, no door?
That's just a glass window.
Correct. It's around the corner, conference room.
Gotcha. My mistake. All right. Next question is actually more to staff than to the applicant. I understand from the presentation that concern about Spencer Street and the parking is one of the design guidelines in the lakefront, that there can't be parking on a major street, correct? But we also have been moving away from having two major buildings on the same lot. So that's our problem, correct? Is there a reason why it wasn't recommended, or if it was, it was rejected, simply subdividing off the frontage of Spencer Street and creating a second, a second lot, so that wouldn't be an issue?
It is two lots now, but the way that they want, you can ask the applicant why they didn't want to build on the other lot and wanted to build where they did.
It's, it's two lots right now, and we're being asked to combine them for this project. Yes. But if we didn't combine them, we wouldn't have this issue.
Right, but where they want to build their building isn't as far away as the other lot is. You can explain that.
I think the bigger issue is we would not have two subdivided lots for purposes of financing. In relationship to our financing for this $30 million building, it would have been an issue if it was two separate lots, one with a building on it and one without.
But you effectively don't need the Spencer Street piece for your building. It's just parking.
Yes.
And you have way more parking that's required by the city.
Uh.
Way more. Way, way, way more. You're only required to have 124 space, and you're providing almost 480, 479.
Yeah.
So it would seem that if that piece wasn't in, it does not run afoul of a policy that the city's been trying to pursue with not having multiple buildings on the same lot.
The subdivision also, as it is now, is not Spencer Street, it's the other way. It's Solar, and it cuts Spencer Street in half, and then behind it is 324. The line, the subdivision line runs the other way. Doesn't run from Solar, parallel to Kilpatrick through the middle. It runs from Spencer to Kilpatrick.
Be that as it may.
This is the current subdivision line, so it runs through property now.
Right. But if, there were two lots that basically, where the line went east to west, with a parcel on Spencer, or even over further, a parcel on Spencer, and a much larger parcel that contains all that's being constructed, this issue wouldn't be, this wouldn't be an issue. And you're proposing a re-subdivision anyway, so it's not like it would be a different process, an additional process. It'd just be a different configuration of the lots. And it wouldn't set a precedent for the city that we've been trying to move away from. So if the lot went this way, down here, all of what they want to do would be on one lot, and they wouldn't have this issue with that lot.
So we would, in that, in that regard, we still have a first-tier parking issue.
God, you do.
Just for purposes of, one, two, three, four, let's say we cut this lot.
Right. Then that gets rid of the issue of needing to put a building on Spencer Street, because it would be a separate lot. It wouldn't impact your financing, because everything you're proposing to build and way, way, way more parking than you need is still all on that lot.
Well, I mean, we, we will have that many employees, but we would still need to be unable to have first-tier parking on the Spencer Street side.
This is Spencer Street over here.
But we, okay, yes, we would still be unable to have first-tier parking on the Spencer Street side, as it's an A street.
But it wouldn't be part of the development project.
We'd have to, we'd have to put a building there.
In the future, you might, if it's a separate parcel, but if it's not part of this development project.
Sure.
It prevents us from having to continue a precedent that the city's getting away from.
So you cannot have parking in the first layer on an A street. So no matter what, they can't have a whole parcel with just parking. They have to put a structure on it.
I, I understand that, but what I'm suggesting is to facilitate this proposal, not a future proposal, along Spencer Street, we could easily approve this without having to approve putting two buildings on one lot, which is something we've been trying to move away from.
But they want park, they want all that parking, so.
But what they want and what's required are two different things.
I'm.
Well, I understand this if I may.
You just have to come to the microphone?
Take your mic. Thank you.
Tom Douglas, 5280 Hoagland Fayetteville.
Thank you.
One of the mandates in, came from a lesson we learned last time we did 201 Solo. Now, undertook that before leaving, moved in. And his mandate to grow the company in Syracuse, he said two things. I don't want to outgrow the building. I have to be able to park this. I have to have parking for my employees. If we're going to house or employ 500 people, we want to be able to park, so everybody has parking space when they come to work, and not be driving around downtown and parking on side streets and so forth, especially in the world. So I know what the city's requirement is, but ours is more just functional. And we've gone to great lengths to landscape. And we've gone to great lengths to landscape to create that second layer with fencing and landscape, which Scott can speak to, so that you're not moving this vast parking lot behind the building, if that, if that helps you. But it would make it very difficult to finance a $30 million building, and you're talking about two separate parcels, because the parking is a, is a very much an integral part of the entire project.
I just want to clarify what you're saying. So you're suggesting that the, they don't combine it into one, but they could realign the two lots into two new lots with an east-west configuration, so long as they kept that Phase II building there, they would have to pull it forward a little bit towards Solar because there are some parking spaces there?
But the Phase II building would be part of a new application sometime in the future. There's no guarantee even in this proposal that that building is ever going to be built.
That's correct.
So all I'm saying is taking, take the question out of it for now, because there's no guarantee this will happen anyway, and it just becomes part of, if they ever build a new building, to discuss it at that point. The question about their parking preferences is a different issue, but, okay. All right. I also had another question. Again, this is more for staff, and I think it was addressed by the applicant, the issue of main building elevations being parallel to the street line. It's the percentage that's the issue, not that it's not parallel. Okay. Okay. Like about 20%?
Thirty. Yeah, item four in the letter. It is.
Thirty-five point seven.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the last question I had was with regard to signage. It's a little hard to read at the scale, but I've been trying to zoom in. Can you just tell me which elevations you're proposing the wall signs on?
Sure.
It says wall signage on two street, two street fronts and above the main entrance.
The south facade, so facing the city, has one up high on the top right of the building, 11 by eight, 11 foot two by eight.
Oh, the shaded area.
Shaded area, B H, yep.
Okay, and now that you've pointed out, I can just about see it, okay?
Same drawing, top drawing, northern facade, top, top left of the building, so that's facing the Inner Harbor.
Okay.
Same size, 11 foot two by eight. Third building-mounted sign is on A302, western facade, just above the main entrance, so it's at level, it's at the, near the third floor level height above the entranceway.
So it's really only on one street elevation, Kirkpatrick, and then it's on two interior elevations, those.
Northern facade is Kirkpatrick.
Right.
Southern facade technically is.
It's an interior.
Facing Spencer, but in the distance.
Mile away, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's really an interior elevation.
Correct.
And the other one, the northern main pedestrian entrance is on the west elevation.
Correct. And then we have a ground-mounted sign proposed on the site plan, near the main entrance off Kirkpatrick.
What's the size of the ground?
Is it detailed on here? The ground-mounted sign?
Yeah.
L701 has the elevation of it. It is nine foot seven. The text box is eight foot seven by one foot ten tall, and there's a stone backdrop.
You said seven, you said 701.
L701 has a elevation view of the ground-mounted sign, top right of the drawing.
Chris, I can just clarify your previous question, but while you're on signage, if you wanted to discuss the illumination of the signage now, or I'm not sure if that, because that's also.
Yes.
Is a deviation, if it is internally illuminated?
Could someone speak to how these would be lit?
We are proposing them to be internally illuminated.
So in terms of the roof treatment, in here, there is a conference room on the roof, correct?
Yes.
And a roof terrace, and there are exhaust fans. Are any of those, are the exhaust fans illustrated and the treatment of the terrace illustrated on the drawings? The elevations in particular? I'm wondering how visible, other than the conference room itself, which will read as a building component, how the terrace reads, if at all? I'm guessing there's some form of enclosure so people don't fall over. Is that evident in the drawings? It was, it was hard to tell.
Yeah. Yep, that's a good question. So there is a parapet wall.
I'm sorry, what?
Yes. You can, you can see on 301 probably to start.
You can just find 301. Yeah, no, I'm lying. I had to go over here. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so top drawing, which is the northern, north facade. There's a open terrace deck beyond note. So that is actually an opening in a tall parapet wall. That, the base of that opening is at 42 inches, so it acts as a guardrail.
Okay.
And then we will have at least a 42-inch-high parapet, so the facade of the building is actually extending up beyond the roof to act as the guardrail.
Okay.
And it's actually even farther here to provide this opening, give a little wind buffer for the accuments of the terrace up there.
Okay, and is there a roof plan? Found it.
Believe so.
So on the roof, 104, so the exhaust fans fall right behind the skylight?
Yeah, and we intend to screen those from view of accuments on the roof.
And not knowing exactly what you're talking about, in terms of the exhaust fan, are those going to be visible from the grade, or you're saying there's this 42-inch parapet around the entire perimeter, so they'll be well below that?
Yep, they won't be visible from grade.
They'll be well below that.
They will be.
In height, the units themselves are not 42 inches or taller.
If they are, we will screen them with a similar screen wall to the material that's on the penthouse.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. I think they will be lower than that, but we're in design.
Screening them, is that in the proposal, or are you just telling us that?
I'm not sure that's shown.
It doesn't seem to be, that's what I was asking.
That would be something that we probably want to see, well, not probably would want to see.
So Chris, I can just clarify, the deviation of that the building has to be parallel to the street is still a deviation because the property line is straight, and there is a triangular right-of-way in front of that building. So the building is mimicking the shape of the street, but not the property line.
And the regulation reads property line.
Correct.
Okay, I think you addressed our questions. Thank you very much for the presentation and the responses to the questions. We'll pause here now and ask if there are individuals who would like to speak in favor of either of these two proposals to please come forward, provide your name, address, and your comments.
Figured I was on the list, so I'd come up and speak in favor. Len Montreal, Salt City Enterprises, Montreal Construction, Montreal Development. How do you like the T5? We're currently own 30 properties in the lakefront area, so we're familiar with the process, including the Preserve Restaurant, the Gem Diner. I'd like to congratulate you guys to get rid of one of the worst pieces of blight in the neighborhood. That's fantastic. We still got a batch plant down the road, a concrete plant, and you're next to ABC Supply, so you still have some challenges, you know, I respect that. We fight the fight all the time. I would just ask 500 jobs, speed to market is everything. Bringing those jobs in, that's commerce. I support them as one of the largest property owners in the area, and I would hope that the board could find a expedited way to get these guys on the way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other individuals who might wish to speak in favor of this application, please come Is there anyone who just to speak in opposition to the application? If so, please come to the podium, provide your name and your comments. So it looks like we have no additional speakers this evening. Madam Legal Counsel, can you give us an update on the status of these two applications with regard to secret process and SIDA?
As I understand it, has not made its final secret determination, so because of that, I would recommend holding this hearing open in case any new information comes forward that you would like the applicants to discuss.
And we anticipate.
Oh, yes. And of course, if you have any other comments.
Sure.
You can forward them to the applicants.
And the anticipation is that SIDA will take this up or complete its review later this month, is that correct?
Would it be at the next meeting? It should be at the next meeting. So yes.
Thank you very much. So with that recommendation from Legal Counsel, we'll leave both hearings open. We'll await the secret determination from SIDA, and this will appear on our next meeting agenda.
And I would just ask, because two commission members were not here last time, if you have any additional comments that you would like me to give to SIDA so that they may make an informed, secret decision, let me know tonight so that I can forward those to the board.
Thank you. Thank you all very much for the updated information. This is helpful, and we will continue on then.
Thank you.
Our next hearing, please.
The next public hearing is SP 8639M1. This is a special, a special permit modification to a restaurant to modify the floor plan and the signage at 505 North State Street. The property lies within a commercial Class A zoning district, and the owner and applicant is Tesfawat Okubi.
I'm Thomas DeTulio, the architect, 237 Woody Rav, Syracuse, New York. Yeah, they didn't come tonight. A little short notice on this. My apologies. Actually, there is actually no interior renovations or modifications of the floor plan, other than a hardware change and moving of some equipment there and exit door in the rear. That was required by the code office in the inspection. Real concern is that presently, we have a canopy that goes across the entire face of the building. The original special use permit had the canopy stopping at the entrance door, going from left to right on your elevation, A01. The previous owner, which we have shown right here, had one-time replaced this, going across the entire front, and keeping the banner projected or canopy re-signed in the middle. The new owners had, have purchased a new sign, which is down at the bottom right, bottom left of the plant, A01, A05, and that presently goes across the exact same frame that's up there. But it doesn't meet the original special use permit for signage. You see that by the height of it, which is 12 inches, and the length, which is nine inch, nine feet, rather. Wish, get relief from that, please.
That's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Question for the applicant?
A question for staff. The existing signage then was never approved. There was never a waiver granted for the existing signage.
That is correct, and I also just want to clarify that the floor plan modifications are because there have been changes over the years that have never been adjusted through this board. So what was approved is not what is there now, but this will, this current proposal before you is what is being requested.
Set it up to date.
So we look at existing conditions, and what we're doing is adjusting for existing conditions.
I think what Ms. Lemonado was saying is that the approved special use permit had certain floor plan layouts, areas and usage, and then it may have changed without notifying the city of the use of change or the area relocation and use, but since that, they've changed, they've used the exact floor plan, which may or may not be approved or legal.
Correct.
Fair enough. Staff and for Mr. Tullio, we certainly appreciate the clarification.
But basically, what, the walls have moved. They just moved some countertops away from the area and changed some space areas there. We're still well underneath the 25 seats that would, we trigger that going from, in the building code, from a building to a A2 restaurant, but the zoning has different determinations. Still trying to figure that one out.
One other question for.
Yes, Pam.
Staff, sorry. So neither of the existing signs conformed with requirements, because it's a wall sign or a ground sign, not a hanging sign or an awning sign.
Right.
But the awning sign arguably would be within the size allowed for a wall sign. It's 40 square feet for a wall sign, correct?
Yes.
So it's a 40-square-foot awning sign.
Correct.
So one could argue perhaps that is comparable.
It's the type that needs the waiver, yes.
Right, but I'm thinking more about size and information conveyed.
Right.
But the hanging sign is just something that there is no parallel to in what is allowed, because a ground sign would be completely different.
Well, the type is.
But, but type.
For both of these is what's being waived.
Yes.
So you can think of the character of the neighborhood.
Right.
The historic district, are these types of signs appropriate for this streetscape, rather than what is prescribed for all special permits citywide?
And.
I might add a rusty old bracket, still rusty old brackets holding the projected sign, so. I don't know when it was installed, the special use permit did have one, but it wasn't where it is now. It was to the. It was to the far left-hand corner, toward the south end of the building.
So, the previous special use permit, you're saying?
Did have a pendant sign, yes.
Did have one.
But it was in the wrong location. They have since moved it and changed the size. What a surprise that is, huh?
I guess I didn't, I'm sorry, I missed that in the staff report. Okay, that aside, is the, is the existing awning a canvas awning, or is it hard plastic? And is, what will the new one be?
It's a canvas awning. It's over a metal tube.
Okay. And so, this is going to use the existing frame?
Existing frame, correct.
Over it. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
Again, just to clarify, and everybody is very deliberate in processing due to, what you're proposing will take the existing framework. What you're proposing is this sign that, in a sense, fits the appropriate, but it's elevated, it's an awning sign, and you're replacing that awning in kind. You're replacing it, you're not going to expand it.
From the existing special use permit, the awning only went halfway across the front of the building. That was what they got approval for, plus a pendant sign on the corner. Some point in time, they went across the entire front end with a canopy and moved the pendant sign from the corner to the middle. So, don't know when, don't know how.
But I'm talking about the whole thing, the pendant sign.
Oh, my clients would have no objection to that.
Yeah?
My clients wouldn't have an objection of removing the pendant sign if so chooses the board wishes, just to maintain that area allowed.
So, Walter, just to clarify, the original special permit only approved one 15-square-foot wall sign. Over the years, there may have been adjustments or modifications that never came back to this board, which is true with the floor plan. So, you can, in granting your waiver, if you so choose, you can look at what was previously there versus what's proposed today.
Additional questions or comments for the applicant or for staff? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward. So, we have no further speakers on this. We'll close this hearing and move to our next hearing.
Next public hearing is R 1976. This is a resubdivision to realign two properties into two new lots at 1202 Willis Ave. and 657 Emerson Avenue Rear. Gary Prokna and Bashma Musharabash are the owners and applicants, and both lie within an industrial Class A zoning district.
Evening. I'm Terry Luckett from the Syracuse Land Bank, 431 East Fayette Street. The Land Bank recently sold 957 Emerson Ave. front and rear to Gary Prokna, and we agreed to assist him in this resubdivision application. It's pretty straightforward. The back stairs on 957 Rear encroach on the adjacent commercial property at 1202 Willis Ave. So, we're going to correct the problem. 1202 Willis Ave. is going to sell a 10-foot by 35, .16-foot strip to Mr. Prokna. That's it.
Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward if there is such a person. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward. Confirm your name and address, and then you're...
I own the property 120, right next door, 1204 Willis Ave. The whole area has already signed a petition to try to stop this. Greenfront was in around the corner from us before. It was nothing but problems. Everybody, I mean, I can get that submitted to you. I'm the only one that didn't sign it. I asked him, you know, if he was going to put, like, he's trying to put tables there and have people sit there. It's literally three feet from my business. That would not, 1204 Willis Ave. is A New Computer Solutions. I never protested anything, so I'm a little nervous.
Can you just, you are against the application?
I'm totally against it.
And, I'm sorry, what's your name again?
Gerald Underwood.
Gerald Underwood? Okay, thank you.
I guess that's all I really have to say.
That's fine. Thank you for making your comment. Are there individuals who may wish to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward. And we have no additional speakers. We extend to the applicant the opportunity to address the comment in opposition.
I think the comment in opposition really has nothing to do with this resubdivision. 10 feet of the back of this, of 1202, to 957 Emerson. It seems like his concern should have been addressed in a planning commission hearing when we established that business at 1202.
This is the first one I have, so this is the first one.
Yeah, I don't know when they approved that business moving in there. It has nothing to do with this hearing.
Thank you very much.
It's more about the sitting area, but not...
All right, then we'll close this hearing, and we'll move to our next hearing.
Excuse me. Thank you. This is also a resubdivision to combine three properties into two new lots at 738, 744, 752, and 764 West Anadaga Street. Hani Eng, Christopher Community, Inc., and the Greater Syracuse Property Development Corporation are owners and applicants, and the properties lie within a residential Class B transitional zoning district. And I am just confirming Preservation Board's comments on this, and so I will have those to you hopefully in just a moment. They are not printed out in the, we did not have them at the time of this, when this agenda went out.
Terry Luckett, again, Greater Syracuse Land Bank, 431 East Fayette Street. 72 West Anadaga Street was acquired by the Land Bank in May of 2018. Lot 66 feet wide by 260 feet. It's in residential class, transitional zoning district. The district allows for single, two, and multifamily housing. Construction on this corridor is of a single-family housing is very unlikely, because all of the houses are, would outsize a single-family home. The houses there are very large, and it's such a busy street, so single-family is just really not realistic there. When we've worked with affordable housing developers in the past, they typically want an 80-foot-wide lot for multifamily infill, so that didn't work either. This is only 66 feet wide. We reached out to Christopher Community, which is next door, and asked them if they had an interest in building there. They responded that they would like to provide additional green space for their adjacent apartment building at 73844. The adjacent homeowner also expressed an interest in having half the lot, so we thought it was fair as to split. 700 block of West Anadaga Street is characterized by a very large lot, so we feel that this resubdivision fits in with the character of the neighborhood. Was there a building on the site we acquired it? No, it was a vacant lot.
You don't have those comments yet?
Thank you for the presentation. We're going to look for those who may wish to speak in favor of this application to come forward to do so. In favor of R-1977, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward. So, in this instance, since we expect momentarily to have feedback from the Preservation Board, we'll maintain the hearing open, hoping that those comments will come through shortly and can be shared with the commission and the public, and then can decide from there the ultimate disposition of the hearing.
Yes.
Meanwhile, we'll proceed with our next hearing, so as not to hold people up.
Next public hearing is R 1978, a resubdivision to realign two properties situated at 1014 and 1032, 1040 North Geta Street into two new lots. Salt City Enterprises LLC is the owner and the applicant, and the properties lie within a lakefront T5 zoning district.
Len Montreal, Salt City Enterprises, here for 1014 North Geta Street, and what we're looking to do is move the lot line 15 feet. The building's already permitted. It's well underway for construction. This is what was there when we purchased it. This is what we're going to. Most of this is up, and as I said, is already permitted. What we, what we'd like to do, what we're here to ask for, this was the existing survey, and as you can see... My assistant, Ms. Regina Montreal. As you can see, the lot line was right up against the building. I'd like to be able to get a ladder up there, to be able, I mean, there's no way to fix anything if we were ever to subdivide or sell this piece of property off. So, I'd like to just add 15 feet of the property that we currently already own. So, we're going next door, and basically taking this line and moving it 15 feet, and that's it. We own this lot as well. So, you know, it's, it's just difficult for the future, not knowing what we're doing. You know, we do these things, generally, we just do them. We don't have tenants oftentimes. We don't ask for special funding. We don't ask for anything. So, we move quickly, and, you know, sometimes you need to be prepared for the future, just in case. Just in case anybody forgot, this is what used to be there. So, and funding that we received or asked for, nothing. We also have this building that we redid, too. Says the Teachers Union and Poply Architects, and this is covered up, but this is the building that we're looking just to move that lot line.
On the north side.
Yeah, yep. And here is an idea that we had, but we're just not sure. This is the Teachers Union here. This is the building we're talking about. Talking with Doug alone from the Gem, maybe doing a rooftop restaurant bar there. I've got some renderings, but just not sure yet. But basically, just coming out here, the 15 feet, which is mainly into that green space, in case, we got to put an AC unit out there, in case we got to get a ladder up, in case there's a piece of trim that falls off the building, painting, you know, if we ever sold this, or somebody came in and said, "I want to do something, but I want to buy the lot," and we decided it made sense, you can't access the building without asking somebody else to get on the property. That's kind of crazy. So, I'd like to just take the 15 feet from here, put it here, and that's basically what we're asking for. That make sense to everybody? Thank you, Pam.
Questions?
What are some other benefits to that 15 feet, aside from like the, they might be, they, they just explained?
Yeah, well, the main, the main thing is just so we can get around that building, have that access, be able to put, landscape it the way we want, maintain that landscaping, take care of all of that stuff. It's a fully sprinkled building. It's a two-story. It wasn't one-story. You know, how do you access, how do you service that side of the building for anything with, if anybody else ever purchased it? Somebody came in with the right, the right building or the right opportunity, you know, I'd sell it if it was something that was going to happen, if something was going to be beneficial to the area, beneficial to us. But you're never going to be able to do that without having access. You just, imagine, you got something that breaks, how you going to fix it on that side? Had to go in hat in hand and ask your neighbor, "If it was sold, can I please go on your property?" No, then what do you do?
There's options, but thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
There's easements that could...
No, we, we, I believe we could do an easement on that. I think we had to do the lot line before that, but I would prefer regardless to do that, to move the lot line.
Thank you.
Okay?
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You, too. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward. No additional speakers. We'll close this hearing, move to our next one.
Next public hearing is a resubdivision. It's R 1979. This is to combine three properties into one new lot at 1417, 1421, and 1427 to 1431 Valley Drive. JR JP Properties LLC is the owner and applicant, and all of the properties lie within a business Class A zoning district.
Thank you.
My name's Jeff Phillips. JR JP Properties. I have the property down on Valley Drive in order to update the property so we can get the permits we need to, out of there and all. The building is built on the property line, and we need exit doors out the back of the property. Can't put the exit doors on a property line, so we need to have the property line removed so it's all one property, and then we can get up to code with having the emergency exits out the back of the building. It's kind of straightforward. They won't give me permits to do anything without, with the property line there, so... And I own all four, all pieces of the property, and that's about it.
Questions for the applicant? Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward. No additional speakers. We'll declare closed and move to our next one, unless there's an update on the one that we held open.
There is. I do have information from the Syracuse Landmark Preservation Board regarding the resubdivision R 1977 to combine three properties into two new lots at 738, 744, 752, and 764 West Anadaga. So, this is what they say. "600 to 700 blocks of West Anadaga are eligible for the National Register as a potential historic district, per the State Historic Preservation Office. The historic parcel widths are fairly consistent on these two blocks. What is proposed will widen to already extra-wide parcels, which is out of character with the historic corridor. The proposed resubdivision could have a negative effect on the character of the potential historic district and may impact future redevelopment and revitalization of the block."
Okay, thank you. So, those comments will be reflected in the record?
Yes.
And I would be remiss if I didn't re-extend to the applicant the opportunity to address that comment made. I take it in opposition to the... I take it in opposition to the proposed re-subdivision.
I did look at some of the...of the existing corridor, and CNY Services at 703 West Anadaga has a frontage of 198 feet. Really Apartments at 700-14 West Anadaga Street have a frontage of 179.5. So there is precedent for large wide lots on this street.
Remind us what the width would be after the proposed re-subdivision for the two...
Give me a second, because I have to look it up. Unless you have it. Heather, do you have it?
Your lot's width, your lot 16A will be 101.125 feet on Delaware Street and 244 on the AC side, this is on West Anadaga Street. And lot 16B will have a frontage of 165 feet on West Anadaga Street. That's either five or...
Okay. Where does the 700 block start? Does it start at Rich, or does it start...
Sheridan, I think.
It starts all the way up at...
Sheridan.
Okay, wait. So here's West Anadaga. Rich is this cross street.
There's the little cross street, kind of across...this is Sheridan, I think.
Oh, okay. But it's this spot? And this is 700?
Yeah.
Okay. And what were the addresses that you gave for the two large ones?
See, Christopher Community right now is 132 feet wide at 738-44. So that's going to be increased to 165.
Okay.
CNY Services is at 703, has a frontage of 198.
Okay.
And Really Apartments is at 700-14, has 179.5.
Thank you. So basically, where's the rest of this?
This is more traditional.
Thank you for the additional comments. I think we're in the position where we can close this hearing now, having those comments from the Preservation Board, so we will do that and move to still another...
The next public hearing is R-1982. This is a re-subdivision to combine two properties into one new lot at 246 to 248 and 250 East Water Street. 246 and 250 East Water Street Partner LLC is the owner and applicant, and these properties lie within a central business district, office service zoning district. The applicant did email us and say he potentially would be late if he wouldn't be able to attend at all. So, oh, there we go. So he's here. So, thank you. So I don't have to say anything else.
Good evening. My name's Luke Esposito. I'm the owner of the two existing properties, and appreciate the consideration for the re-subdivision. The reason is somewhat twofold. We have a redevelopment plan for two apartments, one on the top floor of either building. And when we were going through our planning phase, we understood that if we wanted to cater to the first-floor tenant in the existing 250 East Water Street building, so if you're looking at those two buildings, the one on the left, east, if we had a two-story retail concept, we wouldn't be able to get the residential tenant up on that third floor into the building without cutting out a significant part of the third-floor work plan. So we decided to come up with a plan to kind of route the residential traffic to the west side of the existing Falker Building, where there's an existing entrance off the street with a staircase, and we would then, you know, those two apartments that are going to be built would have access in a back kind of common area of the building on the third floor. So the residential entry for 250 would be going through the building now that's 246.
That necessitates the combining the two...
Correct.
So they're two separate buildings?
Right now, yes.
Okay. And the first-floor tenant is already going across both property lines, or you want a new, a future tenant to be able to do that?
Right. Yes.
There's no in the space now?
Yeah, both buildings are vacant, and the redevelopment plan includes residential component that requires a re-subdivision. There would be access from one building to the other, and there's also a commercial component that the second-floor tenant would also utilize space on both floors at this point. Yes.
We do have a project site review in the office, so I do have...there are some exterior alterations, hence the reason for that.
Of course. The...I don't have any plans with me. I'm sorry, I'm kind of a sub for this evening.
George, what did you ask? I might be able to help.
He explained that the apartment buildings, like, if you have a plan, I would think that that would be vital in our decision going forward, like...so it'd be...I'm just basically asking, would he be opposed to or opposed to showing those plans?
So the second...the first floor has proposed, I believe, retail on one building and part of a restaurant on the...
East.
East side, and which goes upstairs. So the restaurant is kind of like in three different spaces. On the...if you're looking at the building, on the right-hand side of the first floor, it goes up and over into the second building. I didn't see where the wall needed to break through for the apartments, because I did see two separate apartments. I don't know why or how that...all I know is, right now, for this development proposal, in order for the permits to be issued to open up the wall, whether or not people have utilized those spaces before, this re-subdivision would be necessary, unless he got a variance from New York State.
Right, and that entrance to the other apartment from one building to another would occur in the...it's with the south part of the building, and a small entryway into your apartment.
So restricted to the third floor?
Yes.
Additional questions for the applicants? Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for attending this evening. Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward. No additional speakers. This hearing is closed. We'll move to our next hearing.
Next public hearing is a three-mile limit review. This is in the town of Camillus. This is for 3S0909M4. This is a modification or an amendment to Malibu Hills Estates. This is to create five new lots, Man Malibu Hills Drive. Snowbirds Landing, too. LLC is the owner and applicant.
If the applicant is here, please come forward. Anyone like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come to the podium. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward. Not unusual for three-mile limit case, but the application is complete, as submitted, correct? So we'll close this hearing, unless there are any questions for staff. We'll close this hearing and move to our next hearing.
Next public hearing is 3S1917, also a three-mile limit review. This is in the town of Gettys. Zavaglia Property Subdivision is the name of the subdivision. This is to realign two lots into two new lots at 430 South Avery Avenue, and Dominic Zavaglia is the owner and applicant.
The applicant is here, please come forward. If anyone would like to speak in favor of this application, please come to the podium. And if there is anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward. We have no speakers on this. Again, the application, I assume, is complete, as submitted, so absent any questions of the Commission members for staff, close the hearing. This completes our public hearing scheduled for this evening. We have additional business tonight, but we typically return to the top of the list of our hearings and try to render a decision where there's sufficient agreement of the Commission members to do that. The first two hearings that we held this evening pertain to the project in the Lakefront District, the re-subdivision and the site plan review, R-19-75 and SR-19-08. Those, as was noted earlier, will be held open pending further action by the...by SIDA, eventually action by this body once that step has been completed. That takes us to the special permit modification on North State Street for the restaurant, There was a presentation by the applicant's representative. I don't believe we had any additional speakers on that, and that hearing was closed, so we are at liberty to act on this if there is a motion one way or the other.
Move to approve the awning sign, the waiver for the awning sign, but not the hanging sign, with a negative declaration.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any extensions? That re-subdivision, or special permit, rather, is approved. Now we move to the first of several re-subdivisions, R-19-76, the project on Willis Avenue and Emerson.
Just very quickly, do you mind, Chris, just going through your reasoning for proposing a denial for the sign?
Basically, it's inconsistent with the regulations.
Okay.
Whereas the awning sign at least approximates the size that would be allowable for a wall sign.
Thank you. Just wanted that on the record.
Sure.
So R-19-76, the re-subdivision at Willis Ave and Emerson Avenue. We did have a presentation. We did have a speaker who was opposed to the re-subdivision, and the hearing was closed. So we, again, are at liberty to act on this if there is a motion to do so.
Move approval with a negative declaration.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any extensions? That re-subdivision is approved.
And thinking of my friend over there, because it's an incredibly minor adjustment to the existing lot lines.
Next application is yet another re-subdivision, R-19-77. We had the presentation on this, and we had the arrival and time of the Landmark Preservation Board comments regarding the proposed lot width on this, but we did close the hearing, and we are at liberty to act one way or the other on this proposed re-subdivision.
Second.
I would just like to note, before we move to the vote, that after getting the additional information from the applicant, but also checking Google Maps, the 700 block appears to be substantially out of its original pattern. There are quite a few lots that are larger. There are a number of vacancies, so even if the lot lines haven't changed, the lot building pattern is completely disrupted in that block, and I would reluctantly concur with my colleague that this probably should be approved. So to call a question?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any extensions? That re-subdivision is approved. We now move to another re-subdivision in the Lakefront, R-19-78, the re-subdivision that's proposed for the 1,000 block of North Gettys Street.
Move approval with a negative declaration.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any extensions? That re-subdivision is also approved. We're now looking at the proposed re-subdivision in the valley, R-19-79, the project in the 1,400 block of Valley Drive. Is there a motion on this?
Move to approval with a negative declaration.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any extensions? That re-subdivision is approved. Last re-subdivision for the evening, R-19-82, is the project on East Water Street that we just heard. Is there a motion on this?
Move approval with a negative declaration.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any extensions? That re-subdivision is approved. The first of our two three-mile limit cases tonight, the first in the town of Camillus, No speakers, but not atypical for a three-mile limit case. The application is complete. Is there a motion on this?
Good. I'm also approve with a negative declaration.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any extensions? That three-mile limit case is approved. We move to the one in the town of Gettys, 3S-19-17. Again, no speakers, but the application is complete. Is there a motion on this?
Move approval with a negative declaration.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any extensions? That case is also approved.
Steve, before you go on, Catherine, a while ago, I asked about our doing a seeker finding where clearly some other entity and an adjacent local government has probably also done a seeker finding. Did you ever find out whether or not we should be doing that? I'm just worried that someday we'll be inconsistent, like it'll be a type-one action and we'll say negative deck.
Where to type-one action, you're right, that's why we wait for the lead agency to make their seeker determination. In theory, you could act before the lead agency makes a determination, but that would pretty much be a faulty decision, because you don't have all of the facts, so that's why we hold them open. I am just remembering you asking me this now, so I'm not sure, I must have responded. So I think you are correct when...definitely, when a positive declaration and a lead agency is involved.
Okay. Again, my concern is that, well, only recently, we've begun to look at subdivision requests beyond size, shape... Again, my concern is that, well, only recently, we've begun to look at subdivision requests beyond size, shape, et cetera, et cetera, that some of the adjacent municipalities may look at the proposed development that would come after the subdivision. So they might, they might have done a more lengthy environmental review. I just want to make sure that we're...
And they should be sending out the coordinated review information if it's been declared a type-one action.
Do they send us something anyway, if it's just a subdivision? Do they send a short form or anything?
Do they? Do they?
Yes. On our three-mile limit subdivision application, we require the, a seeker, a short seeker, a seeker form, but also the municipality's approval, whether that's minutes, or a resolution, or a code enforcement officer, or someone in charge signing the map. Because some municipalities are smaller and they don't, they might not have a public hearing. So we do make sure that they have looked at it and approved it first.
So I guess I'm just thinking, if they were to send a short form and they've made a seeker determination, again, I'm not sure why we would need to do it again if the de facto lead agency, if not in the legal definition, the lead agency for an unlisted action or a type-two action, has already made a finding.
Yeah. I, I understand, it's essentially redundant, so...
Well, it's redundant if we agree, but if we don't agree, it's, it's crazy. So, anyway, it's something to think about in your spare time. I'm done.
Hope I find spare time.
So we have additional business tonight, and our next category is minor modifications. We have a couple of items under that classification. Heather, can you give us an overview on each of these, one at a time, please?
Sure. This is a minor modification for SP-1712M2. This is a special permit for offices to modify the site plan, floor plan, and elevations of 2013 East Genesee Street. Why are you looking at me? SP-7512M2? All right. Back to, back to order here. They would like to install an office, I'm sorry, install an elevator. I should just let you do this. They would like to install an elevator on the backside of an existing three-story building. The commission approved a special permit in 1975 for offices, and they did grant a parking waiver to allow 25 off-street parking spaces in lieu of the 40 required. There was another modification in 2013 to reconstruct an existing 16-space parking lot and expanded the parking waiver at that time. This proposal does not reduce the number of off-street parking spaces and does not necessitate any new or expanded waivers.
Questions for staff on this?
So... What, what is our purview here? Can I, can I comment on the design of this elevator tower?
Yes.
It seems like perhaps just an oversight, but the windows on this construction should at least be the same size and shape as the building to which it's, to those in the building to which it's being attached.
Okay.
And it's, and that's a fairly minor change.
Okay.
And they, I note that in the, the notation is that they are fixed insulated aluminum windows, so that's not really the issue. They can still be fixed. They don't have to be true double hungs like are shown in the main building, but at least proportionately, they should be equal.
Okay, we can add that to the decision as a condition.
Additional comments or questions for staff? Okay. So is there a motion to approve the special permit modifications with the comments included?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? So that's approved with the condition noted. And we have a second application or project under minor modification. Can you give us that overview as well?
Yes, this is a minor modification, SP-1920. This is M1, the first modification to a light-duty motor vehicle repair special permit. This is to modify the floor plan and elevations at 1417, 1421, and 1427 to 1431 Valley Drive. The applicant is requesting to modify the floor plan and elevations to remove a second floor and install a new glass and aluminum storefront on the property. They are requesting to do that in order to comply with New York State Building and International Fire Code. The commission reviewed this evening, the re-subdivision, R-1979, to remove the lot line. This building was built over the lot line. And the special permit was also this year for the light-duty motor vehicle repair. This does not necessitate any new or expanded waivers.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments on this for staff? If not, is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? That, too, is approved as a modification to the special permit. We move to another category of business now called modification considerations. We have just one item under this classification. Can you give us the synopsis on this one, please?
Okay. This is a modification consideration on a property at 200 South Franklin Street. This is also known as 333 West Washington Street. And this is SP-0813M9. This is a special permit modification. The original proposal was for a parking lot, so that's why it's a, a public parking lot. Was originally together with new construction of this building on the lot. This is to install four wall signs. So Jeff put together this very nice chart on the bottom, and it would be up to the commission to either have a hearing or not for these wall signs. The proposal does necessitate two waivers from the City of Syracuse zoning rules and regulations.
In the comments, if I'm at the right place, um... There were a lot of good questions about how to approach decision-making on the signs in a, you know, a situation like this where there's been two sets of construction and different tenants coming and going, and now there's all, there'll be, there are...
Yep.
Still, this, when they, if, if we allow them even doing this, there's still be more room to have signage on the building. And how you determine the size of the tenant, who gets that kind of treatment.
Right. And downtown is, um, the amount of signage and the type of signage is restrictive. When we have multi-tenant buildings, there tend to be directories rather than signs on every floor or above, or the building is identified. For instance, the Icon Tower.
Right.
That's how the building is identified, and usually tenants say, "I'm in the Icon Tower." And then the street-level signage directs you into the door where there's either a tenant identification signage on the outside or on the inside when you go to a lobby. So this is, over the years, there'd been a lot of requests for exterior signage, so we wanted to bring this to your attention. And also, you are the decision-makers on this, so we can have a larger discussion about this or lose a couple of things. One, the request before you is, does this necessitate a hearing or not? And then looking at and evaluating all the signage on the building is, of course, under your purview.
What's the sense of, thank you for the summary. What's the sense of the board in terms of necessity for a public hearing? Is this a topic and an issue and the complexity that we would be well-served by a public hearing? Or does it not rise to that level? Any thoughts?
I don't think we need a hearing, but if others do.
Okay. Decision, decision one. Now, to the heart of the matter. Discussion, I guess, first on, on the proposal in front of us and thoughts on this, taking into account comments from the departments that were provided.
We, we, I mean zoning, we can have a discussion, or the commission can have a discussion with law on this. Special permits are allowed one wall, one ground, not to exceed 40 square feet. Because this was originally a special permit, that's why this does keep coming back. In addition, the central business district signage regulations are, as I said before, restrictive. I think one of the things to talk about comprehensively is, is this special permit really still appropriate, given that I believe the parking lot is not a public parking lot as originally intended? So does the special permit still apply? And that's something that we can have a discussion with law department about.
I think that's a very valid question to ask. If we set that aside for a moment, since the, the proposal does not comply with the sign ordinance, what would happen if the special permit wasn't an issue?
A waiver would be necessary for every sign above and beyond what is allowed.
And that waiver goes to...
The zoning administrator.
Okay. I, I think it's fair to ask the law department for an opinion on whether or not the special permit even applies, given the current use of the site and development of the site.
I can prepare a memorandum on that.
I think that would be helpful.
Is it possible to speak up, I'm here on behalf of the property owner?
Certainly. Why don't you come to the podium and provide your name and address and then additional information you might have?
Andrew Gerhart, address 115 Solar Street, apartment 204. I work for Pioneer Management Group, the property owner, developer, and, and current management. To answer the one question about the parking lot, a portion of it is still public parking, allowed for public parking, and on nights and weekends, the gate is open for public parking at all times. So if that satisfies that question. And then the, just to give you a little context on the signage, the signs are for Ramble Engineering, previously O'Brien &amp; Gere Engineering, who facilitated the, the development of that property, brought 350 engineers down to that, that property, as well as Terracotta Advertising. You know, they're, they're one of our major tenants in the, the building. They employed 230 people in that building. It's common practice now in many major cities, many, many cities around the country, as well as Syracuse, to allow anchor tenants, per se, in buildings to have exterior signage. And that's, that's all we're going for here, to allow and facilitate that, that signage. Originally, the building was planned to have a lot more signage than is on it now. I have approved plans from 2008 with me, if you'd like to see those. There was an abundance of retail signage, as well as upper-level signage on the property that was approved in 2008 when we submitted plans for the original construction of this property. There was main building signage that gave the building quote-unquote "name." The name is Washington Station. As a developer of the building, we're not going to put the name up there. Everybody knows that it's 333 West Washington Street or Washington Station. The anchor tenants, O'Brien &amp; Gere, we would like to put their sign up there. Now Ramble, in order to satisfy an obligation to those tenants that we have. Terracotta and Ramble both have the rights to put building signage on the building per their leases, which was originally approved in 2008 when the building was constructed.
I'm, I'm sorry, say that again. Which ones were previously approved?
Just more signage was previously approved in 2008. We were originally able to put signs on the upper levels of the building, a building, a main building name sign, as well as a anchor tenant sign, not exactly what is shown in those, those photographs, but of similar style at, at the higher...
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to ask staff then for clarification. Jeff, in your chart, Ramble is basically O'Brien &amp; Gere.
Exactly. They were, they were...
They, they don't have a sign for O'Brien &amp; Gere now.
They do not.
Right. Okay. And Terracotta does not have a sign now.
Correct.
But Blue Ocean and Harris Beach do.
Yes.
So that was part of the original approval for the development of this project? No. Those are subsequent approvals?
Correct.
Okay. And then MVP, whatever that is, there's no record, but they, they have a sign? Okay. What constitutes a major tenant?
Well, a major tenant occupies a significant portion of the building. So O'Brien &amp; Gere, Ramble initially occupied three floors of that property. So that's almost 60,000 square feet.
And are they still going to each occupy three full floors?
Ramble now occupies two full floors. Terracotta occupies the entire fifth floor and a portion of the sixth floor.
And the other two, Blue Ocean and Harris Beach?
Blue Ocean occupies a portion of the second floor, as well as Harris Beach occupies a portion of the second floor.
So, not speaking for my colleagues, but speaking for me, you could have basically all the rest of that space, the other half of each of the two floors that you mentioned, the balance of all of those, and everybody could be effectively called a major tenant, which would be that many more signs on the building. And I, I would find that problematic if it was something that was going to come before me. But if the special permit didn't apply, it wouldn't come before me, it'd be others to deal with. I, your comment that there is a trend to put signs on the outsides of buildings for all major tenants, I mean, not the best example, but if we were looking at the Empire State Building, it certainly isn't littered with signs for all their major tenants. So I don't know if we're dealing with this in the proposed zoning ordinance because it's the one section I didn't read, even though I read everything else. But, but I think that, no offense, but if the applicant gets to decide what is a major tenant as opposed to the municipality when it comes to determining numbers of signs, that ends up being problematic. You could say somebody with 5,000 square feet is a major tenant and come in and ask for another sign, and the next thing you know, we have 10 signs on each facade because everybody's considered a major tenant. So...
I can understand that.
So I think there's a bigger discussion to have here. And the first thing I would... Um, and the first thing I would request is that we first find out whether or not we should even have the special permit apply, and then if it is, or maybe in the interim, we could have a study session that just addresses the larger issue here, not specific to your, to your proposal.
I would just offer for further clarification with respect to the original approval. Although signage may or may not have been included with the original proposal, the approval did not include any signage in 2008.
So, when the building was proposed, the development was proposed, there was no sign package that went with it?
There was no signage approved by the planning commission as part of the 2008 original approval.
So, these two approvals in thirteen and twelve were the first time signs were brought before this body?
It wasn't the first time, because those are modifications, um, seven and eight. Uh, there were sign, um, I think the first signage we saw was, uh, for the third modification. Uh, there, I forget the, the, the name, but there is a, a optical shop that went in on the ground floor. Uh, there was.
Mondo Optical.
Okay, Mondo, uh, there was a bank, um, that was in there at one point. Uh, so, there has been signage approved as modifications, uh, I believe, starting with M3.
Thank you.
Is the building fully occupied now?
The building is fully occupied, yes. And, and just to, I guess, address a, a point of concern that you have, we, we don't plan on putting more signs on the building. Um, you know, there may be an opportunity to put another retail sign on for one of the first-floor tenants to direct people to their door, because they don't use the lobby entrance of that property. Um, they have a direct access door on the West Washington Street. Uh, they have not approached us and, and asked for it at, at this time. That would be the only, um, additional sign that we would be putting up in the future.
Is there a place for the optical place?
The optical place will be, um, occupied by a, a tenant that won't need a sign. There's no exterior access to that, that's actually just gonna be an, an expansion of a, adjacent tenant.
Okay, it sounds as though the opinion from the law department would be helpful in moving forward with regard to the necessity for the special permit. We will await that opinion, um, and then return to this item, once we have that additional information in hand and, uh, based on what that tells us, um, we're more likely to move one way versus another way, I think. So, um, so no action on this item this evening. I will put Madam Legal Counsel on the spot a little bit and ask whether she anticipates that opinion might be available by our next meeting, or?
I think so, yes.
Okay.
I can make that.
Okay. Great. Okay. So, um, I think we have a plan forward on this one. Uh, thank you for the additional information provided tonight. That's helpful, and to have some of this discussion, uh, I think is informative and helpful. So, um, thanks for waiting this long, but that's where you fell on the agenda.
That's all right. If you guys need any additional information, I'm happy to provide any of that.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Additionally, we now have some new business items, and if I'm not mistaken, seven out of the nine are time extension requests. Um, the last two are, are a little different. So, um, with that in mind, Heather, can you, uh, take us one at a time to each of these time extension requests before we deal with the last two items?
Yes, the first one is SR1409M1. This is a fourth request to, uh, extend the time extension. They would like to extend it to April of 2020 in order to pull additional building permits for future tenants on the first floor. So, the actual building is physically done. Um, we did request, or we did encourage Core Development's attorney to attend tonight, because there were so many. Um, I don't see her, um.
Okay. You, the other individuals in the audience, are you here for any of these?
Great. Okay, so, um.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not sure what, um.
So, in this particular case?
Hang on one second, okay. Sorry.
Do you need to help them?
Um.
I'm just signing their, their form for the.
Well, I didn't know Heather did too, though.
Oh, I think it's okay.
It's fine.
You're, okay.
It's a fine.
I didn't wanna hold them up, no, I didn't wanna hold you up.
She has a very legal signature, so you'll want hers.
He has the ESQ.
So, with this first one, the building is essentially done. There's a couple of tenant spaces that have him filled out. Is any of the building occupied at all at this point, do we know?
Yes, it is. And I, I am not sure why they need an extension to get other permits on the first floor. I, I, I don't know how that would affect, like, if, if a, if a permit routing form was sent up to our office, I'm not sure that this.
If, if they have a C of O.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know why. They might need this. So, that's why we did encourage them to come tonight.
Well, from, from my perspective, and again, not speaking for my colleagues, if the building is in operation, and this is a minor amount of space that needs to be finished, um, unlike some we might be talking about in a few minutes, I would not have a problem with this limited expansion of basically, extension of basically four months. But it's, it does seem odd that they would even need this, if they have a certain type of occupancy.
Right. I don't, I don't know. I mean, we wouldn't hold up a building permit, because, I mean, like you said, it's already constructed.
Beyond that, it's occupied.
Right, a tenant is just going in there. So, I'm not sure why this was, uh, requested. Again, I was hoping.
Would you prefer us to hold it open?
I have no idea.
Four months on the clock now, where we said it's a year from the original, but, um.
We could just act on it, 'cause it's really minor. And it's occupied.
Okay, so that's the extent of the information we have on that one. Is, is there a sense of the body to make a motion on this and approve, or approval, or otherwise?
I, I would move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any extensions? So, that extension is approved, and we move to another extension, also with Core. Third request, this is on West Kirkpatrick.
So, this one's a little different.
Right, this is not constructed at all.
So, they've not even broken ground yet?
Right, that's correct.
That's peculiar.
Not that I know of.
Just because they're gonna, in, in fewer, less time than the last one, they're gonna complete all construction.
That makes no sense.
If they haven't broken ground already, that doesn't seem feasible.
I don't know. So, in which case?
This sounds like it might be a good one to invite the applicant back and, um, give us a better understanding of what they're dealing with. So, what's, Madam Legal Counsel, what's the appropriate action here? Can we simply hold this and extend the invitation to the applicant to?
Um, yes, and for formality's sake, maybe somebody could make a motion to hold four questions.
Okay.
I would move to hold this to, till a time when the applicant can come before us. And I would specifically question how, in three months' time, which will be much less the next time we convene, how the applicant intends to complete all construction improvements in addition related to the subject site plan review.
Discussion, further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any extensions? All right, so we'll invite the applicant back on this one to engage in more discussion on this. We have still another one from Core, also in the lakefront. This is on Spencer Street. Do we have additional information on this one?
Again, I assume nothing has started on this project, Heather, correct?
Core, wait a minute, does not, oh, no, has not. It's just, they say Core does intend to proceed with the parking lot, which implies that they have not yet already.
So, I guess I would repeat my last motion. That's, again, it's even a shorter time, and even though it's just a parking lot, as we head into the depths of winter, one is probably not going to be constructing a parking lot. So, I would restate the same motion, that we not act on this until the applicant has a chance to clarify what's going on, and again, should be prepared to show how all construction improvements in additions can realistically be completed by the requested date.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any extensions? All right, so we'll hold this and invite the applicant to participate in a future meeting with additional details. Uh, our next time extension request, also at, uh, must be something in the water, at, uh, Lakefront District, um, also by Core, this one's in the 400 block of Solar Street.
Since I'm on a roll, and I assume this hasn't started as well, is that true?
Correct.
I would make another motion, that we not act on this until the applicant has come before us to explain how all construction improvements in addition relating to the subject special permit can be met by the requested date.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any extensions? This is on hold, um.
And just maybe to add to that, when I say to show how the, it, I, I would think a project schedule would go a long ways to showing how that would happen, in which they also would be able to start by saying they have their funding in place. Because if the funding is not in place, then the project schedule will be pretty meaningless. So, I would suggest you convey that to the applicant.
Then our next one is also by Core, and it's also in the lakefront, and it's the same address. This is for the civic use special permit.
Yes.
This is just another dimension of the project we just dealt with.
Exactly. They are waiting for a confirmed tenant.
On the Pro Mod, tenant is?
For SP1610.
Facilitate Hardscape site improvements on the property.
Well, that, I'm reading the email that, that was sent. For both our SR1611 and 1610, um, they're saying that they need a, uh, currently working with prospective tenants, not commence construction until we have a confirmed tenant. So.
It's, it's almost regardless of what it is. The, the bottom line is, if there's no construction started.
I understand.
So, yet again, I will make a motion that we not take any action until we afford the applicant to come before us to explain how all construction improvements in additions related to the special permit for the civic use can be, like, be completed by the requested date.
Second.
Discussion. Favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any extensions? So, this two example, um, requesting additional information is with the previous ones, and these are all with the same applicant, so that could be dealt with pretty efficiently.
Right.
Make a letter.
And one presentation, perhaps, but could, uh, go a long way in addressing that. We have another, or two more, two more, uh, time extension requests. Both seem to pertain to the same project, uh, but at a different location and with a different applicant. Heather, do you have details on these?
Yes, these, the number six and seven, they're companion pieces for Loretto. Uh, R1846 is a re-subdivision time extension at 312 Fillmore Avenue, and Z2805 is a time extension for the project plan review for, uh, 312 Fillmore, which was for exterior and site alterations, and both are Loretto Housing Development Fund Corporation Incorporated are the owners and applicants, and a planned institutional district is a zoning district that they both lie within, or that it lies within.
So, this is their second time extension? Nope?
First.
First? Time extension? Okay.
And one's until February, and the other is till December.
Yeah. It's the summer term.
So, so they're looking to get the subdivision approved before they get the project plan approved? No, the zoning approved, sorry. The project, yes, right? The re-subdivision is the February date.
Correct.
And the zoning is the December 2020 date.
Right.
Do you know what they mean when they say that they're requesting, um, in order to resubmit for funding?
Said they're resubmitting.
Said it, was it, I didn't get this, is it like competitive funding, or are they just looking for private financing?
Uh, New York State Homes and Community Renewal Program. They have a letter on page 370. Oh.
A letter from EDR.
Okay.
Sounds like competitive funding.
It should be the second page in your.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
The second page of your report.
Right.
For this particular one. I forgot.
Right, for the re-subdivision or the, the zoning?
For.
It should be, I don't know. Uh, specifically, the re-subdivision is, the letter's page two of your, um, report.
The project will be resubmitting for funding.
And then for the project plan, oh, okay, it's going to be.
I know the feeling.
Like page five. Page five. Right.
Well, it seems that we've given everybody at least one chance at an extension. Yes.
First, yeah.
Do you know why they have the two different dates?
I think because they were just trying to be consistent with the, the re-subdivision, like, it, um, was February 11th, 2019, so they just wanted a year from that. And the project plan review, uh, was December 10th, 2018, or 2019, so they just went.
Gotcha.
Take these, uh, one at a time, is there a motion on the re-subdivision time extension?
So, moved. To approve, I'm sorry.
I was assuming, but it's a good thing you clarified. Uh, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any extensions? That is approved, and now the second extension request, this for the project plan review. Is there a motion on this?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Question.
Question.
Question. Any extensions? That too is approved. And our last two items under new business would be the request from SIDA for. And our last two items under new business would be the request from SIDA for lead agency status under Seeker for the project on Cortland Avenue. Do you have additional information that we should know about regarding this request?
No.
I didn't see an announcement of that project. What, do you know what it's gonna do with the laundry facility?
Well, let's see.
Same day as the one we just dealt with tonight.
I believe this, that they are making the 5G technical boards. Might be in here, hold on.
Stuff, 5G stuff.
It's like a light, yes, showcase 5G technology. Develop, manufacture, test, and showcase the 5G technology. It is, I'm not sure if this is in color in your iPads, but it's a larger campus-like setting. I have had some discussions with, with those involved in this. Perhaps a planned development district would be the appropriate action here. They, they would like to potentially abandon some, a street or two. So it does seem the most appropriate kind of zoning district review process for this campus-like setting. We do have a product site review just for exterior elevations at the Coin Building to get that started. I do have to talk with law about that to see how does that fit in. Is segmentation triggered by that? But we do have an application in for the, just the exterior alterations of one building. But essentially and comprehensively, this is a much larger project to facilitate a company coming in to do all those things that they wrote in their letter. So it is a type one action and SIDA is going to, is proposing to be the lead agency.
The PIT, I think, makes some sense. And I think I've heard it referred to as, in its announcement, as a campus. Now granted, it's a small campus, but that might be a very good way to approach this.
Yes, so this board probably will see a lot of action with respect to different proposals coming in for this comprehensive project.
So at this point, our requested action is to acquiesce in SIDA serving as lead agency for this review. And we should formalize that if we're in agreement through a formal motion for this body, correct?
Yes.
Okay. We could have further discussion now or we could have a motion and then further discussion if we want to talk about this more.
Can you just say, so moved to allow SIDA?
Sure, we'll put that on the table.
To be lead agency under Seeker.
Okay, I hear a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And do we want to discuss this further or ready to vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? So that is approved from the letter of vote to SIDA. And before we get to our authorizations for our last meeting of the year, we wanted to talk a little bit about the meeting schedule for 2020. And someone's, Jeff, Heather, both of you have sketched out a plan for next year.
Yes, so at the last meeting, not all of you were here. And the meeting schedule was a little bit different. The day that we proposed this to you, we received the common council schedule. So we wanted to make sure that we coordinated with that schedule. We have several schedules to coordinate with, County Planning Board, Board of Zoning Appeals, Preservation Board, and Common Council. We don't want to delay applicants, especially when things have to come from the commission to the, to the common council. So we did adjust this. And we also didn't want to, we recommended not acting on the last schedule because two of you were not here. So this schedule does coordinate with as much as possible all of the other boards that might be involved in a decision that has to be made through zoning. So we think this is a fair and... Can't even think of the word right now. A, a good schedule to pursue, so you can look at those dates.
Were there any changes from the first draft you sent after you looked at the council schedule? Is this identical to what we had before?
It is different.
No, or there were some changes, okay.
It is different so that we could coordinate with the common council in a much better way.
Okay.
I don't think so, that was fine for me, so.
So we should... I think we need a formal motion to approve this so it can be published. Does anyone see any issues here?
No, that's what I'm kinda looking at now.
Yeah, I just looked through mine, too. I like just one meeting in December. And when is, the only thing I didn't look at is when is Thanksgiving next year? Is that Thanksgiving week?
Can't be as late as this year.
It is?
No, it can't be. This was the latest, it's the 26th. Okay, so it's Monday, Thanksgiving week. We're not following on major holidays, which would, so that's good. Week before Memorial Day and... I think it's looking good. Anyone spot any issues?
Nope.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt this meeting schedule for 2020?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? We have a meeting schedule for 2020 and one meeting in 2021, as it turns out. And the last meeting for this year, so.
Well, we'll, we'll take that off.
Just to give us a heads up.
Put that in there, Jeff was on a roll.
Okay. Oh my. Whoa. Okay, well, thanks for doing this. It's something we need to do and it's good to get this done now and get word out. So, so they had us taken care of. Let's turn now to, to the authorizations. And I think one last thing before we adjourn. So we've got on this schedule. Okay, good, good. Seven new items, plus we have the two carried over from this evening. And the other items, which are new business, that don't require authorization as a hearing. Did we, so we have everything? That's seven plus two is nine?
Right.
For the December 30th meeting, is there a motion to authorize?
Wait, before we do that, I just have a clarification. Is SP 1912 convenience store that we had all the neighborhood attendance on? The one on Wyoming and?
I think this was the one that needed the encroachment?
Oh.
The one near No James. We had lots of people in the neighborhood here.
Yeah, yeah.
And we approved it? We did not approve it, I can't remember these things. So now they're coming back again for effectively the same kind of thing?
They revised the site plan in response to review comments from the DPW transportation.
But it's likely all the concerns that the neighbors had the last time are still gonna be the same.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Because it was...
It was, it was heated.
Yes, the controversy wasn't, had, had nothing to do with what they're coming back with. It was more of what they're actually gonna be doing and implementing.
Right.
For the record, the planning commission did not render a decision on this. You held it open, but it's been six months or more. So we have to reauthorize it for a continued public hearing.
But it's effectively the same proposal? Minus some differences in the site plan.
Yes, with the revised site plan.
It's still a convenience store with a restaurant in that location?
Yes.
Yada yada, okay. And then the second thing was the very last item, AS 1914. Is this not basically what we just talked about? A building in downtown that, that wants a number of wall signs? Well, this is for one tenant. To identify the building for this one tenant. I, I approved a sign waiver in part. I didn't give them all that they were requesting because they, there was a previous waiver for this building. And essentially, that same waiver was given to this tenant. And they want more than that? Correct. And is, is this one park place? Yes. And this is all for one tenant? Yes. And is the existing waiver for a different tenant? Yes. So again, multiple tenants in a building that wants signs above the first floor? Well, no, this... No. So the previous one was for Hiscock Barclay. Okay. This is for, I believe, Hayler, Fryer, and Coon. Okay. For moving into the building. Okay. Hiscock and Barclay got two signs. Hayler, Fryer, and Coon would, is requesting four. I gave them two. Okay. But, but again, what we're doing is it's quote, "major tenants" from the owner's perspective who want signs above the first floor. I take it? Yes, well, they would like to identify the building as this building, this tenant.
Hayler, Fryer, and Coon building.
Okay, so it's slightly different. Right. Okay. I just wanted to make sure if it was exactly the same.
Say one park place.
Gonna say the...
One Hayler, Fryer, and Coon.
Or Icon Tower.
Yeah.
All right, so, okay. I was just worried it was the same thing. And you'll get all the information, we'll make sure we copy the previous waiver and all the information so you can make an informed... But as long as it's not the same as the... And by the way, that is me making that noise. I think it's the wire under the desk. Oh, okay. But it wasn't always me, so somebody else might be connected to this wire. So many people may have this problem. Or am I the only one with this?
Well, I've got one down there.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, I have it, too.
Just, I don't know who needs to know that, but somebody who understands electricity might want to know. Okay, that's all I wanted. So, I'm sorry, Steve.
So is there a motion for the authorizations for the nine applications as just reiterated?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? We have those authorized for our meeting on the 30th. You have a question?
Are there any updates on slation, zone slation?
Uh, yes, so the scoping document was just accepted by the common council and they will be holding, they will be pursuing the next phase of Seeker and holding a public hearing and accepting comments throughout January. Well, this is just the scoping documents, not the actual zoning ordinance.
It'll focus on the seeker determination and that. So that will be related to the environmental issues highlighted in the scoping document.
And we can give you a copy of the scoping document if you would like. Sure. Yes, please. I think so. I don't know if it's official, but...
I believe that the hearing is tentatively scheduled for January 7th, the secret hearing.
It's a scoping.
Scoping, yes.
Can you all, can someone just confirm and shoot us an email or something? That'd be great.
I just wanted to make a comment before we adjourn to reiterate for those, especially who weren't here at the last meeting, to get comments to Heather with regard to the first two applications this evening so that additional comments, whether they pertain to parking or any other issues discussed tonight, can be integrated to additional correspondence that she might have with SIDA.
I, I think the most important thing is this idea of two buildings on one site. I, I would hate to set that precedent, but... Two, two buildings on one lot.
Lot.
Sorry, I knew my reference wasn't correct. Thank you.
I think the questions we asked covered my... Covered my questions. But there was nothing that we didn't cover.
Just let me check if that opportunity's there. And with that, is there anything else we need to deal with this evening?
Cookies behind you.
Say no more. But first, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Any abstentions? Go for the cookies. Thank you.